I hereby reconvene the October 8, 2013, meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:00 PM. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Board, I'd like to bring up Ms. Deb Jenkins. She, as you know, is our Director of Career Teaching Education, and she's going to do some introductions for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. It's a pleasure, once again, to have representatives from the Fort King Middle School FFA Chapter here tonight. And giving the inspiration is Charles Paddock, and leading us in the pledge is Austin Johns.
I would like to share a poem by Brenda Shop. My grandfather used to say that, once in your life, you need a doctor, a lawyer, a policeman, and a preacher, but every day, three times a day, you need a farmer. I believe this poem explains how our lives are touched by agriculture every day.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call Ms. Albritton up. She is one that never wants any recognition for the accomplishments of this chapter, but we know that ag teachers, FFA advisors, put in a lot of extra time and hours to provide opportunities for their students, and most of these are after-school hours. Fort King Middle School has been designated as a three-star chapter at the national level, and this is the highest honor that you can earn at the national level as a chapter. And so, we're very proud of them and their accomplishments. They have a set of required activities that they're supposed to complete throughout the year, and it's based primarily on community involvement and growth within the chapter itself. So, once again, you know, we're just very proud. They're no strangers to this board, so you know what they've done. They were here last year as state winners in tool identification, and, of course, we're very proud of Mrs. Albritton as well and the time that she puts in.
You know, Ms. Jenkins, I was hoping Ms. Albritton would stand up there and tout. See, it's been an old coach, if you don't talk about your program, you gotta talk about your program.
If you ask your question, I'll answer.
You know, I know the FFA program, FFA program, is very important, and most people don't understand that there's more than just, just the little, the little things that we perceive, just like the farming and things, but there's parliamentary procedure and all of those things, and that's important. And I, just talk a little bit about all the things that go on in your program.
Well, FFA makes a positive difference to the lives of students through premier leadership, premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. And so, a lot of the things we teach in the classroom are how to be a leader, how to show good character, how to make good choices, and it's not all about farming. But in Florida, the agriculture industry is over a hundred million dollar, a hundred billion dollar industry, and 22 million people work in ag-related jobs every day. So, it's not to teach them to actually grow up and how to be a farmer, it's to teach them how to be a good consumer, how to be able to grow up and vote on agriculture issues. And so, it's kind of how to understand how agriculture impacts their life every day, not just when they go to the grocery store, but when they buy clothes, make decisions. Yesterday, we were at a student leadership conference, and they just learn a lot of things they don't learn in a regular classroom every day, besides working outside, growing a garden, raising animals for the fair. They have student agriculture experience programs that they do at home, and we are right here in the city, so, you know, we're really lucky that kids want to be involved, even though it's an agriculture club, but it's more an integral part of the classroom than just an after-school activity.
How much science is involved with what you all are doing?
A lot of the standards that we teach, I teach, actually, a high school credit course to my eighth graders, and they get a high school science credit, and so, the standards go across the board to anatomy, physiology, biology, algebra, and it's all on our benchmarks. So, it's basically cross-curriculum. And it's, it was in the paper last year, we had forty visitors in our school in May, and they were legislators, we had one or two senators there, and they were really amazed, and the kids did the program, actually, and I stood back and helped support them, but they, they were actually amazed at the things kids do in the class every day.
You did well explaining to us what ag was about.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
And again, thank you so much for being part of that program.
Oh, thank you.
The Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 8, 2013 School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? And the motion passes 5-0. Please lock in your vote. And it does pass. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 5, 2013 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the September 10, 2013 School Board meeting. May I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? And the motion passes 5-0. Yep, okay. Yep, it's up on the screen. May I have a motion to adopt revised job classification description for the Certification Specialist and Records Manager? Motion, second, please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, these job classification descriptions have been revised to more accurately reflect skills and abilities in order to provide consistency within similar job classifications, and to provide additional information in order to make all our job descriptions consistent.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board on these, on this revised job classification description? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Board members, any?
Call the question.
Mr. James moves the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes 5-0. All right. May I have a motion to adopt the revised job classification description for classified Personnel Specialist and Instructional Specialist?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, these job classification descriptions have been revised to reflect title changes that conform to the current staffing plan, to more accurately reflect skills and abilities in order to provide consistency within similar job classifications, and to provide additional information in order to make all of our job descriptions consistent.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board regarding the revised job classification descriptions? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Board members?
Call the question.
James moves the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes 5-0. All right. May I have a motion to adopt the revised job classification description for classified Personnel Specialist and Instructional Specialist?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, these job classification descriptions have been revised to reflect title changes that conform to the current staffing plan, to more accurately reflect skills and abilities in order to provide consistency within similar job classifications, and to provide additional information in order to make all of our job descriptions consistent.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board regarding the revised job classification descriptions? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Board members?
Call the question.
James moves the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to adopt a revised job classification description for Executive Director of Business Services?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, this job classification description has been revised to update those classifications supervised by the employee in this position, and provide additional information in order to make all of our job descriptions consistent.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board on the revised job classification description? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Board members?
Call the question.
James moves the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes 5-0. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt a new job classification description for Plant Manager?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
This new job classification description is recommended in order to comply with the revised 2013-14 Staffing Plan.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board on this new job classification description? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Board members, we'll move the question then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to adopt the 2013-2016 Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedurals Document?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, Florida statutes require school boards to submit proposed procedures for the provisions of special instruction and services for exceptional students to the Department of Education every four years.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board on the Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedures Document? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Board members?
Call the question.
James calls the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item C-25, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes 5 to 0. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of Voyager Ticket to Read and Vmath Live Software with Title I funds at the approximate cost of $180,000? Any motion and second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mr. James. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Yes, I withdrew this item late this afternoon because, due to the government shutdown, I was really late getting my information about the research I was doing on the programs. Remember when we board, when we approved a program for Fast Forward Reading or something like that? I don't remember, it was about a month ago or so. After we had approved it, on my 24/7 Town Hall meeting on Facebook, I had some teachers contact me and contact me by phone, they got my phone number, called me, and they were kind of in a little group, and they had evidently experienced Fast Forward at their school, and they were, they said, you know, why does anyone ever check this stuff out? Because this stuff doesn't really work well, and this sort of thing, you know, and they, I have a little committee, there are a couple of us that have gotten together, and we kind of go through some of these things because it's too much for me to handle by myself, all the people calling me. So, we really didn't know where to go. We went to the US Department, so we just decided, we looked around about it and checked, pulled it up online and saw this, what this company had to say. Then we went to the Department of Education website. The Department of Education website stated that there was absolutely no evidence of any reading gains on that program in their evaluation of the program. I don't know whether we care about what the US Department of Education says about programs, but they do hire universities through grants to do research on the programs to see if they're effective, and we have them in quite a few schools, and that, it said, different, said, you know, had a pretty good section about it, but we had already voted on it, it was over, it was done with. So, when this program came up, I went back to the Department of Education website, and it was down because of the federal shutdown, you know? So, my program was down, I couldn't get back to the US Department of Education. So, in making some phone calls and things, I found a website, bestevidence.org. It is John Hopkins University School of Research, Education Research. They also get grants, that's one of the organizations that does a lot of the grant studies on programs, and then they report this information back to the US Department of Education. On their website, I also found Fast Forward again, and it was pretty, and kind of matched what the Department of Education website said. The Department of Education website was a little more extensive talking about it, but at John Hopkins, it said, no credible evidence of any research, how was it? It stated something about, anyway, there was no evidence also of gains. It's kind of the same thing. So, I decided to go on and look a little further at the programs that we were just now talking about, the Voyager Reading and that sort of thing, and, oh, it said insufficient evidence of effectiveness on Fast Forward. So, I had two different websites that told me the same thing. Then, couldn't find, so, decided to look on the Hopkins Research website and look up Ticket to Read, and it basically said, there was, there were absolutely no qualifying studies on Ticket to Read that gave any research about whether it was effective or not. So, could not find Vmath Live because I couldn't get to the US Department of Education, I had this smaller one at Hopkins to go by, so, decided to call the company that Cambian Learning Group. I'm looking at my notes because I did this just as I was walking out the door. Luenthe Cambian Learning Group, and pulled up their website, and sure enough, it talked about, you know, some Common Core stuff and different things on there, and so, I decided to go and pull their SEC filing form, 10K, that tells you a lot about the company, it looked like they had had $14 million embezzled by an employee or something, there was all kinds of stuff, but on there, it also said that if districts implemented Common Core, that it could be costly for them because they would have to go in and do some additional investment on product development. It's basically what I picked up was if acceptance of our product is negatively affected by the adoption of Common Core state standards, our sales could decline, requiring us to spend more on investment and product development. So, that looked to me like we were adopting a math program for 180, well, this combined price of 180,000, after we brought Math Solutions in here this summer, and we gave them nearly 100,000 to tell us how to do it for Common Core, and that we were adopting now a policy, a $180,000 program that was not Common Core aligned. So, being quite frustrated, I then called the 1-800 number, and I could give that to you, Mr. Tomlin, and y'all can check on that if you like, or not, but I've got their 1-800 number written down in all my little notes, but I'll find it for you. 1-800-547-6747, and then it said, you know, press 1, and then to get to the Vmath and all of that, a person came on, and this program that we were buying, and I asked them, you know, if the, if what we were purchased, if this, if their Vmath was Common Core aligned, and they said, very slowly, no, it's not. So, I don't know whether we might want to possibly hold this tonight, put it on hold, and let staff development or someone go in and check these programs out to get a little more information. We could always bring it back at the next board meeting and vote on it, but possibly it doesn't matter that the Title I program is not Common Core aligned. However, even if the state accepts Common Core standards, because our standards and their standards, I've been reading about that, they're pretty close aligned anyway, and if we just went with Common Core standards, even if we didn't do the national testing, I would think we would not want to spend 180,000 on a program this year that is not aligned with Common Core. No wonder, the teachers tell me, they're telling us to do one thing, and they teach us on one thing, and then they're telling us to do something else, and here I find we're spending this kind of money on a program that, we bring 100,000 with the people in here in July or June to teach us how to do Common Core math from California with Math Solutions, and then we go spend 180,000 on a program that isn't Common Core aligned. I don't know if that matters to anyone here, but that's the research, and it's a fact, and you've got the phone number, and you can call them tomorrow, but I'll be voting no on this for tonight.
Be happy to address that. I'm not sure, Mrs. Stacy, I don't know whether you want me to address Fast Forward, Common Core Standards, or Ticket to Read and Vmath.
I don't care, I'm just giving you information that the US Department of Education has on these programs.
All right. The recommendation from the administration is to go ahead and purchase these. I have with us tonight Dr. Anna Dewise, who's with our federal programs, a former elementary assistant principal and former elementary principal, and I'd like to ask her to come forward if she would now, or from there. Anna, come up here if you would, please. Tell us a little bit about the two programs that we are proposing tonight, and how effective they could be for our children, and how they'll be used with our children district-wide.
Oh, good evening, everybody. First and foremost, I want to say that the reason we opted to continue the purchase with Ticket to Read and Vmath is because we no longer have SES tutoring. We have some Title I tutoring based on school budgets at different schools, which only is limited to a certain amount of students who are probably behind, if you will. We have four middle school sites with the 21st Century Learning. We have tutoring at Howard Academy, and so, basically, we don't have a whole lot that kids can do at home in regards to tutoring. As far as what you're going to receive with Common Core, I'm not going to even address that, but what I am going to address is basic skills. So, you're going to get basic skills with your Ticket to Read and your Vmath. And so, I have tons of data here, I have some pictures that I'm going to send around while I discuss this with you, and then you can see how you want to vote for that. Being an aunt of students in Marion County Public School Systems, my sister has three children who use Ticket to Read and Vmath, and they all have done very well. I can't speak for other students, I can just tell you about my nieces and nephews. One of my nephews is ESC student, he's autistic, he is able to read on Ticket to Read and Vmath. These programs are aligned to that child's ability, and it's able to enrich them and is able to remediate them. So, in regards to Ticket to Read, passages that were read for the entire 2013 school year, which was last year, was over 210,000 passages that our students read, and basically, that was about 1.5 million minutes that children were reading. In my opinion, as a parent first, as an aunt second, as a principal third, anytime we can get a child excited about reading, that's going to help some type of scores, whether they're Common Core or FCAT 2.0. In regards to Vmath, you know, the more you expose your children to problems, the better they become. And so, with problems that our children answered and got correct last year, there were over 85 million problems given to our children in this program, and that was about a little bit over 1.2 million minutes that our children spent on those programs. The paper that I'm sending you now is from February until May, and that's when we tracked this data, and so, you'll see T2R, that's Ticket to Read with Schools and Minutes.
So, these are, these are pictures of kids that have been in the program, is that what this is?
They have been in the program and were rewarded because the company actually allowed us to use their mascot. We have a person in our office that goes around and gives kids rewards, once they reach a certain goal. Schools are actually rewarded, individuals, classrooms are rewarded, and also, the students are rewarded.
Well, I know the company did say that if, if the districts adopt Common Core, that it could be a financial hardship for them, that they would have to go back and rework their programs. So, I guess they're banking on districts purchasing this that are not really, have not really adopted Common Core.
I can't speak to that, I don't know what they're talking about, but all I know is what I've seen at Feasen, and you'll see my numbers at Feasen last year when I was a principal there up until November, and that occurred after I left, so, you can imagine what those numbers looked like while I was there. If you have people pushing basic reading and basic math skills, you're going to create students who are learners, avid students. Sometimes, it's hard to have a child and a parent have flashcards. Well, this is computerized, they can do this on their cellphones, they can do it on a tablet, an iPad, any place that they can have a wireless connection. Some of my kids at Feasen did not even have computers at their, at their homes. They went to their neighbors' homes. They bought into this program, and it helped with their basic skills. I was a principal there four and a half years, and as you know, our school went from a D to an A. One of the programs we used at home was Ticket to Read and Vmath, so I cannot say anything negative about these programs, and I want to go back to my nieces and my nephews, and they are also doing very well with those programs. This program, if you purchase this program, will carry our students through July. So, basically, you would have an at-home tutor, they can do this in school this year, and it will flow until the end of July.
Dr. Dewise, how many students are impacted by this, approximately?
At the elementary level, we will have a little bit over 19,000, so, all of our elementary students excluding pre-K. However, I cheated because I was at Feasen, and I wanted all of our kids to learn, so if there were some pre-K kids who actually could read, we gave them access to Ticket to Read. At the middle school level, K-12 Academics is also purchasing this program for their level, the Vmath in particularly, and that's about 9,300 students, so, in all, over 28,000 kids will benefit from this program, basic reading and math.
Well, I see that our school that we're having to pay to have remediated, they had a lot of use of that program also, and we're paying for serious remediation. I'm just bringing to your attention.
Now, remember, that was only at home last year, so if you don't have computers at home, you didn't benefit. They should have purchased that program so we can have it for everybody.
I just feel, I need to tell you what the Department of Education themselves say about the programs that we're using, and if we want to adopt programs that they say is not effective, or there's nothing to prove they're effective, that's up to the other board members. That's fine, it's fine with me.
Okay, but Devil's Advocate, they didn't say that Ticket to Read and Vmath were ineffective.
They said there's no qualifying studies.
Absolutely, so I can give you the name of our representative.
But I couldn't get to the US Department of Education to find out on their website.
I can give you the name of our representative, so you can speak to him.
What representative?
The person that we're buying this from.
Of course.
So, that way, they can give you, maybe they have some informal audits or something like that.
If I wanted to sell you something that I wanted you to buy, I would tell you all about its good, too. So, I don't want to talk to the representative that sells it.
Well, I can tell you from, like, my nieces and my nephews, so, you know, and...
Ms. Dewise, can I add something to what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
When I was principal, we had both of these programs, and I'm delighted to see that they are offering them at home now, because parents, they are having trouble, they're struggling with, with children's academics, and so, the fact that they can put a child on a computer, that they can do this work at home, is a great motivator. And kids, especially at the elementary level, I know 15 schools are Title I, you know, they need these kind of things to keep them motivated, and what you said, basic skills, that's what we're looking at, basic skills, and I was very pleased with the programs, and I'm glad that they're continuing.
I was very pleased with those programs as well.
Dr. Dewise, I'm really, really impressed with the programs, on the level that I understand that young children at home will have their access to this online, and it is all about basic skills. Once they accomplish those skills, they can go to the next level, and then, I do believe that Common Core, that factor that it will play, these type of tools have a more important role in assisting that child along with that Common Core when it comes along.
I guess they're integrated.
Yes, they're integrated together.
My curiosity is that, you know, as we're looking at how we're seeing the future...
If possibly, we looked at the Department of Education to see what they already have that, what they already have information on, because they do have information that Fast Forward is, they have absolutely no evidence, and they've got a lot of studies that have been done that there is, that there are any reading gains. And so, go to the US Department of Education website, and you can pull up the program and pull up what they say about it, and my advice to anyone in the district that's purchasing these programs is possibly to check there first, to kind of say, because the company that you're buying things from, of course, they've got a product to sell. This company that we're buying this from, according to the, their filings with the SEC, I mean, they've had, they've had, they've been hit with some serious financial problems. If the form that I read is correct, it did say there was, there's been some problems, so, just, you know, if it's a good program and y'all love it, that's fine, but I'm going to have a hard time supporting anything that the research at the Department of Education says is not working.
Go, go to one of your schools and take a look.
Yes, it's a school.
It's a principal. Go see what they're doing there.
Well, y'all are more happy with C schools and D schools, I'm not, so therefore...
I think, I think here's the thing.
Completely different philosophy.
Dr. Dewise just stood in front of us and said to us, Feasen was a D school, and you utilize these tools with your students, and you went so far as to understand that even pre...
And you brought the school up.
Even pre-K, even some pre-K students benefited from it, that's what I'm understanding. And that school grade at Feasen went from a D to... And that school grade at Fesenant went from a D to an A. And we're all, I mean, this is our community.
They will have confidence in you.
Skills, basic skills.
I want to say one more thing about the Common Core comment that you made, and also with Mrs. Ely. If we don't have basic skills, we can't ever go deeper. And that's what Common Core is going to give you. It's going to give you deep. It's really hard for teachers to set aside time to have flashcards in the corner while they're having to go deep. Being in the classroom last year, every day, every day I was a principal, I was in the classroom, sitting right there talking to kids, learning with the students, evaluating the teachers, sometimes it's really hard. Kids don't understand how to make connections with multiplication, and they don't understand that words actually become thoughts and meanings, and they're not able to imagine all of that in their brains. So if they don't have a basis at home, and we can't give them the basis that we need to do at the school level because we're going deeper, 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 where are we going to have the fallout? And I think this picks up with the fallout. It's going to help those kids because it's going to get them motivated. And as you know, or you don't know, my birthday is going to be Friday. And so when, and I'll be turning 38. So when I was nine, my mom had me in the kitchen while she was cooking on the floor, flashing cards.
Oh, yeah.
And my little sister did that. So she knew the multiplication numbers before I did because she actually had the answers. Well, a lot of parents don't do that right now, you know. And what they're going to do is put those kids in the room or in the living room, and they're going to have them watching television, singing songs, doing things like that. But if they're on the computer, and most of them have gaming systems at their homes, if they're on those systems and they're able to get those basic facts, it's going to help our teachers learn a lot more in the long run to help them with Common Core.
Well, the mere fact that the company themselves put on their 10K file that if the acceptance of our product is negatively affected by adoption of Common Core state standards, our sales could decline, requiring us to spend more on investment in product development. So probably the new ones that come out, they will probably have to address that. But I'm just sharing with you the research on that product.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Well, not yet, yeah. I'm sorry. We're not finished here yet. Dr. Dewise, my understanding is that we used this program last year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then to, and before I go on, did anybody else have anything that they wanted to add? Then to the point that Ms. Stacy, the reservation she has, if, Stacy, if you would like to offer a motion to table this until the next meeting, because I think it would be very easy for us to bring in the math and reading scores from last year and see if we, if this thing's having any impact.
But she said they were just using it at home. They weren't using it in the schools.
But that would, but that would impact if they're using it at home. I would hope that they don't.
If they're indeed using it.
Well.
That's the data that shows they're using it.
You know, if y'all want to do that, that's fine. I can, I mean, I don't see why, are we in a hurry to get this?
We can tell our kids they can't have it for another.
We're in a hurry. We're in a hurry.
Yes, we need it now.
Whatever they want to do is fine. I'm going to vote against it anyway.
All right. I would, I really would like to see the, see the data.
I'll second your motion if that's what you want to do.
And then I've got to pass the gavel, and then that's going to, to do that.
You know, I don't really believe that we're dead tired hard to get it, like, in a little bit of time. Is.
But I'll tell you. Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I hate to get into this one. I know I'm not going to get a good result. You know, when we have, when we get things from Washington, it's always amazing. Sometimes everything that come out of Washington is the gospel. And sometimes when the same thing coming from the same place is the worst thing we ever seen in our life.
Well, this came from John Hopkins.
No, let me, let me finish. And then when I sit here and I listen at this stuff, and I see us going over and over, and we have evidence that support the fact that we need to go ahead and continue with what we're doing, because there's no evidence to support it was not, it was bad for us. And then I'm sitting here wanting to table it. And I just would like for us to just, for some reason, let's don't get these last-minute things with all these, all these scientific studies that came in a few minutes. And these people have been working on this thing all for a long period of time. And I would just like for us to say either we're going to accept things from Washington, and then as gospel are we not. But don't just flip-flop on me like this.
I'm not asking to take anything as gospel from DOE in Washington or even in Tallahassee. I think that the data that we need to consider is what happened to our students. And if we see that students are doing well against the list that has been presented, I think then it'd be a testament that the system works. I don't know.
And Mr. Crawford, you know, and I know, the effectiveness of schools, and all schools, depends on the leadership that you have locally. And when I say that, highly effective principals make things happen. Now, we can sit here and look at Washington and everything else, but the local people can take the flashcards that she was sitting on the floor in her kitchen and make it work. And so what I am saying to this is I think we need to continue with the process. And if we have a problem with this process next year, we come back. But just to stop it at this particular point, just to stop it at this particular point, and we're in the middle of the school year, we're not in the middle of the school, we're taking off into the school year, and say, well, we need to, we need to discuss this again. Okay, I'll table it for us to discuss next year. But I'm sitting here saying, let's don't do this right now.
Mr. James, they're asking us to renew this program, and yet I don't have any data showing me that the program was effective. And I would think that would have been something that we would have had here tonight, saying, look at our reading scores, look at our math scores. They either improved over the previous years, and therefore, we can relate that part of that improvement was a direct result of this program, and consequently, we think it's a good investment. I don't understand why that's so hard. I'm not asking for anything from the national level. I'm not asking from the state level. All I want is our local data. And I think that that would be very simple to compile. I'm a little surprised it hasn't, it wasn't here tonight.
I'm not surprised when we just pulled it. You were just notified today, right? So, Dr. Dewise, I'm, I think that what we're looking at is understanding, the children have been using this throughout the summer, too. Is that, is that a statement?
Yes, ma'am.
So throughout the summer, we have, summer, we have Marion County Public students using the program. If we stop it right now, okay, if we don't approve it tonight, do you know yourself what would happen to the program?
Well, it's not going to be used.
It's not going to be used.
It hasn't been used so far. And so around this time of the year, we have our kickoff and roll it out.
It's a renewal, right?
Yes, ma'am. And it goes through until July.
Okay.
When does it start?
Well, when you approve it, it'll start.
Did you have, how much time were you given to draw all the information that we may have requested?
Today.
Today.
An hour.
I just hung up from talking to this company an hour ago before I walked in.
So.
Because I could not get on the government website.
Can I have the information she did pass us?
But Ms. Boynton.
I'm just talking.
Okay, ma'am, but I'm going to.
I'm just talking.
Here's a bunch of pictures of kids.
Well, that's fine. And, 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 ma'am, would you please, would you, I'm going to, I'm going to respond. Let me tell you something. I'm going to let you do that, but I'm also going to respond to what you're saying. We're not going to just push this thing off. Go ahead.
Listen, I have a right to ask a question.
Ma'am, I am.
And I think so, sir, that you need to calm down.
I am calm down. You're the one getting irritated.
Because I'm just going to ask her, what's the information you gave us? And what you're saying to me is.
And that information is from February until May.
February to May.
Yes, ma'am.
And just at home.
At home.
At home. We don't really have anything, Mr. Crawford, in the schools. They haven't had it in the schools. The kids have used it at home supposedly. They may have and may not. All I know is I see one of our failing schools on there. I don't know if the other failing school is on there or not, that they did use it at home, but they still. I mean, we're using Fast Forward, and it's recommended by two institutions that it's not effective. So why not just go the whole route? I mean, someday the Department of Education will take us over, I guess.
I am just amazed that, and I don't care how much time that the administration had to pull this data, but since this data is all available on the DOE website in Tallahassee, all it takes is a few key clicks on the keyboard to bring that data. And apparently, there is a fear of bringing that data. So that's what I can, I can determine. So now, I was going to originally support it, but we don't seem to want to talk about that. We don't, just bring it in here.
Dr. Dewise, at this point, though, the only data you've been able to pull is the number of points that each school has.
Yes, ma'am.
And you haven't been able to pull the growth of each individual student who's been on. I think, you know, last year with the at-home program, we can't compare that data to anything. You know, just the fact that it's motivating kids to work at home, and it's another program that teachers can also access, the number of points each student has in their, from their classroom, which is great.
Are the points where the kids have taken little assignments on it?
Yes, yes. It's just a plus. It's a positive reinforcement to the basic skills. And I'm all for it, and I'm all for anything that we can do to also enhance the at-home learning. Because like I told you, many parents are kind of afraid to sit down like your mother with their kids. So this is something, put them in front of the computer, get them on a program, and let them go with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else on the board?
No.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
I'm opposed, but I think I just lost my agenda.
And the motion passes three to two.
I just X myself out completely, Mrs. Brenda.
And the vote is three to two. Board, may I have a motion to approve the following donations? $2,500 to Dr. NH Jones Elementary School from the business partner, Dr. Quinn Family Dentistry via the Public Education Foundation. $1,500 to Forest High School from Slack Construction Incorporated. $1,500 to Fort McCoy School from Fort McCoy School PTO. $2,000 to Hillcrest Public School from the Fraternal Order of Eagles. $1,000 to Hillcrest Public School from the Silver River Museum. 10 picnic tables and miscellaneous landscaping items valued at $4,500. To Osceola Middle School from Lowe's Home Improvement. $1,000 to Reddick Collier Elementary School from the Quanis Club of Ocala. $2,500 to Silver River Museum from the Silver Springs Alliance Incorporated. $1,000 to Silver River Museum from the Aquapure Water and Beverage Services Incorporated. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from S. Barrett and Sons Incorporated. $1,000, excuse me, $1,500 to Westport High School from Darren Rich. I need a motion and a second, please. Motion by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Boynton. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion should pass five zero. And it does. All right. Ms. Boynton, can I ask you to please thank the community this evening?
Sure. I want to thank the community, the businesses in the community for sharing with the Marion County Public School. Especially look at the donations from Lowe's. And I went over to Osceola myself a couple of days ago and saw those benches. And it's really, really wonderful to see the community coming together as always and making sure that our Marion County Public Schools and the students are always taking care of our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, a couple of meeting reminders. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, October 17, 2013 at 9:00 a.m. Purpose of the work session is to receive the investment summary and review the 2015 health insurance, including the self-insured items. Board, before I go to HU for comments, if you remember, back on, back on September 10, at our board meeting, several legal questions were raised concerning the current staffing plan used in our classrooms. At that time, the board agreed to allow the chair to seek an opinion from our legal counsel on the legal issues raised by those questions. Our legal counsel has completed her research of the issue involved and has issued a report. HU are now going to receive a copy of that report. I have not had the addendums attached to the report copied for you in attempt to save copying costs. If you would like a copy, I will instruct the board secretary to prepare one for you. If you have any questions for Mrs. Morris about the report, she is available to you as usual. If you will just pass those down. And let me just tell you, the addendums probably run maybe 150 pages. So that's one of the reasons why we. Okay, there's an example of the addendum. So if you want a copy, that's not a problem. I was just trying to save a little of our money.
Mr. Crawford, could I make a comment?
Ma'am, go ahead.
I would like to make a suggestion, or I would like some consensus with the board. When a board member asks their school board attorney to do some research, that we have a consensus that that would be okay, because this research cost the school system $4,339. And I feel like we need to take a look at what, what any school board member is asking before we agree to let her do this. This was a lot of work on Miss Morris's part, many hours, and very expensive.
Well, let me just, to that point, I felt I had consensus because I did turn to the board, and nobody objected. So when I instructed the attorney.
I know I'm talking about future.
That's fine. And hopefully, every chairman would do that.
Okay, now, and Mr. Crawford, in reference to what we did here, because he asked, and for all practical purposes, at some, at some point in time, you know, when people are putting things out there, you really need to know. And when he asked for our, asked for our consensus, whatever you want to call it, for us to follow up on all of these things, because this is one of the things when I say that we need to make sure when we say things that they, that we have vetted these things. And again, this is what we call vetting the things here. And this is what, to me, the chairmen do, because they want to, they want to make sure that we're not doing anything illegal or whatever that we need to correct. So I commend the call for this. And I just, I want to make sure when we, as a board, are saying things, make sure that somebody out there are thinking those things that we are saying are gospel. And we just had to, this is just, I guess we can just say this is the price of doing business in this business, because if there was something in there that we needed to, that we needed to be made aware of, that we were doing inappropriately, I think this would, this would bring it out. And I want to commend you for that, because I think this is something we need to have.
Chairman, say something?
Yeah, sure.
I really, whenever, we as board members, we are responsible for what we say. And as chairman, you took the responsibility, you were very responsible in asking our attorney to research this. And I, with the amount of time she put in, we always know, we, we as a board have to be diligent in looking at costs at all this. But this was the wise decision for us to get the information we really didn't need. Sometimes when we are thinking that, you know, we say things, you know, and we're not understanding, there could be some legal ramifications to what we say. I think a good chairman would always ask for an interpretation, you know, and I think you did the wisest thing, and we consented to it. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Stacy, did you?
Yeah. I haven't seen this, but I'm looking forward to sending it to the Federal Department of Education, because in speaking with them, the, they talk about use, the teachers, you know, have BA degrees, that they're certified in their state, and that they're highly qualified. Highly qualified doesn't, means basically also certified, plus they're qualified in their area that they're teaching in. area that they're teaching in. So being highly qualified, the Department of Education, the people that I've spoken to made the assumption, they said, well, we would assume that they were already certified, but they're just not highly qualified. The fact that our district is the only district doing this and, and back in 2002, No Child Left Behind, when that came out, suggested that districts and the state all form a policy on what the long-term substitute is. In our district, it, our definition of a substitute basically states that the substitute is filling in for someone who can't be there or something. You know, Mrs. Morris, you've seen the definition for substitute for us, it does not say it stands in for a teacher. What has happened is our district has used this to get around class size. Other districts are not doing it and I remember when class size amendment first happened and they said, well, can we use paraprofessionals and that sort of thing, you know, to meet class size? And they said, no. And apparently there is a little loophole where if you call them a substitute, you can't, except if your district has formed a definition for the long-term sub and then you can't because then the long-term sub, you know, is until a teacher can fill the position is what a lot, I've looked at a lot of the board policies around the state. And because we don't have, you know, a definition for a long-term sub, also, when it talks about, it says, I am correct, that the sole authority of the Education Practice Commission, I mean, I just got this tonight, they only investigate the teachers that are certified. If we have not signed up, you know, if, if we're saying basically these teachers are certificate-eligible or, I mean, we have, I don't know if the organization of ACE Cambridge or whatever, I don't, or who is it that has ACE, is it Cambridge?
It's Cambridge, yes.
I don't know if they assume we have certified teachers in the classrooms because we don't in one of the ACE classes, according to the sheet that I received from HR, we have a high school diploma person teaching an ACE class and I don't know if Cambridge assumes that we use certified teachers in their classes, I don't know. I haven't even gone there yet. But the fact that the teachers that we have, if they have a mishap in the, in the room, these 100 teachers, they do something in the room, the Department of Education cannot, they have no certificate to attach to. If they do something that they shouldn't do, they have no way to sanction that person. They can leave our district, go to Alachua and not ever even say they worked here and go do the same thing in Alachua. So, and I know we, you know, one of our long-term subs, I know there was an issue with her, but she happened to be a certified one. But I'll enjoy reading this and then I'll send it off to the Department of Education and see, you know, how they look at it because we are stretching, we basically are getting around class size by using substitutes who, 18 at my last count, didn't even, either had a two-year degree or less. They didn't even have, some of them, you know, they were like four to six or something, just had high school diplomas basically or, so that was teaching in our, in our high schools. And we wonder why, Mr. James, at the workshop the other day, you said you wanted to, you know, you wanted excellence, you had been to some programs and they were cute, but you think we should strive for excellence. My point to all of this, and I appreciate Mrs. Morris and I appreciate Mr. Crawford for looking into all of this because the other districts in the state, this will be great for them to have as a guideline, that they can all get around class size by just hiring a substitute unless their district has a policy on substitutes or they have it in their union bargaining. Had our union had it in their bargaining that we couldn't do this to meet class size, then we couldn't have it. And I looked at the Broward County, I think it was Broward County, school board policy. They can use a to-me-class size, they can, they can have a teacher in the, they can have a substitute in the classroom, but they have to show that the position is being advertised and then it has to be attached to the FTE or something to show that the position was advertised. So there is absolutely no way of those 100 teachers, if they did anything here and they go on to another district and they do the same thing, there's no way to attach their certificate at all unless they are certified. And so I'll be interested in going through this because the Department of Education, the National Department of Education, when it talks about highly qualified, they also talk about certified teachers and that we just have to notify people if they are highly, not highly qualified. Well, highly qualified would make, I would assume that highly qualified, they are certified, they're just not qualified in their, in their thing. So this is, this has gotten some interesting debate. We'll see what the National Department, the Federal Department of Education thinks about this, about what Florida's doing and take it from there because I've been waiting for this to send on to the Federal Department of Education to see what they say because all of their, you look at Race to the Top and you look at No Child Left Behind, it says certified everywhere. And so we'll see.
Mr. James, did you have something?
Mr. Crawford, I just wanted to make sure that the question that was asked at that time was answered and I just wanted to say this is what I was hoping that I would get.
Thank you.
I think the union will, this will be helpful to them also because we are using substitutes to meet class size. My further question on this is, and I had, I had contacted Mrs. Boston Ellis about asking regarding how much we're paying per child and I don't know whether she got my message because I left it on her phone, how much we're paying per child that were over class size? Because if we can use substitutes to meet class size or we can use high school graduates to meet class size, they can graduate Forest High School and run work in our classroom and we might not, and it might be cheaper to hire them than to, than to pay fines, you know, for being over class size. So this could be a huge, this could be a huge, huge, I think the Department of Education, thank you, Mrs. Morris, I think they'll probably get into fixing this little loophole because I'm sure that the, that the teachers and the parents will want to, who assume that they've got teachers in the classroom and not high school graduates in the classroom, I'm sure that they will be happy to know when we try to pass this tax, that this is what we're doing and this is what's in our class with our students. And so, you know, there are some things in it that I have an attorney that will also be looking at and I do agree that the substitute, because we do not have substitute defined, but we do, we do have substitute defined. And so because we do have substitute defined, makes me wonder whether or not you're right on this. And you've been wrong before in some of your things, so we'll be checking this out a little further. Thank you.
Anything else on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
And then the superintendent.
I just want to say this one thing, I was reading through this and this, when you have your attorney really researching, do some clarification for you. I know, I know some of the audience, I know the community is saying, we have a substitute teaching that doesn't have a degree. Well, as I read this, I, it was quick for me to pick it up and I want to have some comfort for parents, for the students. I'm going to read this if I may, Mr. Chair. Says the, the most surprising appointment was in the, in the individual with no teaching degree, ACE, teaching ACE English. However, the principal explains the substitute would graduate college in December with a BA. And had he had put his application to the ESD, he could have demonstrated eligibility to be a continuous substitute. So I do want parents to understand that that particular teacher is a student graduating and will be eligible to be hired as a teacher here or a certified sub.
Except in our packet, he's not called that at all. He's, it says he has less than two years educa, two years' degree.
But he's working, he graduated in December. Just so, what, this says that the, our attorney did the research to give us the real deal. And I just want to commend the young man or, I just want to commend that person for continuing with their education and staying in our county too.
Well, then if that's the case, this paper that we got from the district's wrong because his name is on here under just a substitute. I can, and he's paid as...
My point is not to argue this with anyone. My point is to say, I'm the research, this is what was given out and I wanted parents to be reassured, to be reassu, to be more than reassured of the person, the type of personnel that we are hiring, that there has been some vetting and that the principals are aware of these substitutes that we have and they ensure that that person is with the right class. Just wanted to make sure that you understand that.
On here, he's called not eligible for anything, on his paper says. The district needs to fix that then because on here, it says he's not.
Mr. James, can you indulge me just a moment so I can get the superintendent in here? Oh, okay, okay. It seemed like you wanted to say, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. There is a lot of information. I certainly ask the board members individually to spend your time reading that document and as Mr. Crawford has already pointed out, if you need further clarification, you can either call my office or you can call Mrs. Morris's office for further clarification. And then one thing I do, would like to say, Mrs. Stacy did mention a number of times that the use of classroom substitutes was for class size. You remember, actually, it was a budget assistance technique that we use, has nothing to do with class size in that we had budgeted for 100 certified substitutes because it was less expensive than 100 full-time teachers, so.
Right, but that's how we're meeting, but that's how we're meeting class size or we wouldn't just put more kids in the class.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But one question I do have, Mr. Tomlin, and I still have it for Mrs. Boston Ellis is if we are paying, if they're going to charge us $7 million or whatever the fee was, I mean, I've heard different numbers for not meeting class size, if we could bring back some of our paras to teach with the teachers cheaper than we can pay this, I mean, the teachers might, would enjoy the relief and plus, we wouldn't have to pay the penalty. I mean, we are basically using them to meet class size anyway.
Paraprofessionals do not, are not certified individuals that can count as far as teachers of record.
Yes, you have them right here. You just call them a sub, no, sir, you call them a substitute, we have them.
Paraprofessionals are not the teacher of record. The teacher of record is how we determine class size.
But you could make them the teacher of record as you have done 18 on here. You got 18.
I disagree with that, ma'am.
Well, you want, I mean, maybe I can't count. This counts as continuous subs. We had 15 and then it went to 18 and they have two years' education or less and HR's missing, but am I right, Mrs. Kusaka? Your paper shows 18 continuous subs who are, who have two years' education or less and we have paras that, I mean, we have some on here that only have a high school diploma basically and no college.
Those individuals were hired as teachers of record, not as paraprofessionals.
Exactly. So take the paraprofessionals and just change their name and help the teachers out and give them a break. I'd rather pay, I would rather pay, pay the teachers to help out the teachers.
Let's move on. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am.
One more thing, the board members. I understand about saving the trees, but some of the exhibits are, I think, fairly critical to particularly understanding how many of this, that and the others there are. I will have these also available at my office if you just want to come to my office, read it and have that accessible to you at my conference table. I'd be happy for you to come anytime. We're there between 8:30 and 5:00, except for lunch, so don't need to call ahead, just show up.
Does anybody, reminds me of the Southway, does anybody want a copy of the addendums?
If I need it, I'll go to her office.
Now, Stacy, do you want one, copy of the addendum?
What's that?
The addendums that are attached to the report.
Yeah, I might would like that.
Okay. Ms. Flack, will you arrange for that?
Because a lot of the stuff that you're talking about here, like the expert employees and stuff like that, that's to bring in like for ROTC and engineers in the community to come in and stuff, it's not just for a classroom teacher. That's not what it's meant to be, to serve as, so I look forward to going through this.
Okay. Moving on, it's now the point of comments from the board and why don't we just start down with Mrs. Stacy and work towards Mrs. Stacy, do you have anything else that you would like to bring up, add to this weekend or this meeting?
No, I just would like us to strive for excellence, trying to get my head wrapped around that and I'm seeing lots of discrepancies already where she says of the 81 substitutes, only eight do not have four-year degrees. That is, that may be now, but not, that was not at the time that Mrs. Kusaka gave me this or else Mrs. Kusaka's information's incorrect because I have it, maybe you'd like to see that, Mrs. Morris, just for fun, but that's not what they've got, that's not what HR gave me. So, and they're not certified, okay? And there's a difference between having a degree in, in business and teaching elementary school that's not a teacher. But I'm looking forward to us all working towards excellence and hopefully we can get teachers in the classroom and not have to use people that we just name, name anybody a substitute and put them in the room. And I fully understand now why our school grades are falling. I didn't know what it was, but after seeing this, it's really clear why we are in trouble in this district academically.
Ms. Ely.
I wanted to put a plug in for our Coupons for Education. They're on sale at every school in Marion County and they're also sale here in the county office. This is a great book and it's a great way for the schools to earn money and the Public School Foundation too. I was very proud of my grandson, he sold all 20 of his books. A lot of the schools are doing a lot of incentives, but of the $20 that this book sells for, six of it goes directly back to the school, six goes to the foundation and the remainder is the cost of the book. I've already spent several of my coupons, there's four coupons for grocery stores that can be used in any grocery store. If you spend $30 or more, you get a $5 coupon, so please consider buying one and helping our schools. Thank you.
Ms. Boynton.
Thank you, Ms. Ely, for that. I meant to buy one today, you know.
There's a few left.
There's a few left, so. But I want to, I want to let everyone know, tomorrow is National Walk for Our Children to School Day and it's going to be happening at Emerald Shores tomorrow morning, 6:45. Ms. Ely will be up at, and she's going to be walking children to school. I'm going to be over in her district to help her, but...
You're not going to walk with me?
I'm going to walk with her, but...
Okay. Four tenths of a mile.
Yes, I know. And this is something that the Community Traffic Safety Team from Marion County is doing and we're, it's a wonderful thing and parents know we'll be there tomorrow, Emerald Shores Elementary, 6:45, National Walk Our Children to School Day.
Let me add something. So far, 80 children have signed up. If you haven't signed up and you're a student at Emerald Shores and you just come on over there at 6:30 and there's a lot of, a lot of treats, including a backpack for all the students, so just come on over, we've got plenty.
Where's the staging area this year?
It's going to be at Marion Arthur Commerce Center, you know, across from Lockheed.
Marantz.
Yeah, Marion Arthur.
And Oak Road.
Yeah. Another thing, I just want to remind parents, I get so much information on my phone from School Connect. I just was checking it before and looked to see and I can tell like, hey, we have, let me go back to it, my phone is not the best, but congratulations, North Marion Middle School, North Marion High School Teacher of the Year, Paula Williamson, Rookie Teacher of the Year, Jacob Fritschman. You know, these things come out at when it rains, picture day. These are for the parents. If you have an app, I think I was noticed about the storm quicker than a phone call. I was noticed more information on School Connect. It's an app and it's free, okay? Please download it. Thank you.
Mr. James.
Originally, I was not going to make any comments tonight because I, I think we've been all over the place a little bit tonight, but just some things that I would like to just share with everyone out here. We are doing some really good things in our school system and when we have these discussions over here and we only put out pieces of information, I'd like to just say that it's not really that way because we have work sessions where a lot of this information should be discussed and then you can get a full story of what we are actually doing and what we're trying to do. It's important that we let everyone know that the school district is on a path for excellence and we have some very good programs. I'm always concerned when I, when I, when we spend $4,000 for something and we, we put out just small pieces of it because when you look at the document that Mr. Morrison, Morris had down there, it's so much there and it's just like going into the middle of a story and you only see a small section of it. And whatever, anybody can spend anything, whatever they want to do with it. And I just want the people that were listening to us tonight is that I will go and sit down and read that and I'll get the full story. You all may not have the opportunity to do that. So again, I just want you to believe that the school system is moving in a direction where we'll be, where we will be coming out there asking for your support on our future, the future of our school system. And the little tidbits that are being presented tonight about this and that, we need to make sure that you're aware that the rest of the story is floating around there somewhere. And it's important that we get the rest of the story out there because if we are to focus our school system, I have, I know that we have to have everybody on board, all hands on, on deck for this particular thing. So my comment, again, is that we are doing some neat things. You heard about, we have been doing things, but we have a future that we have to look forward to. That's my comment. And by the way, I did get out into some schools too, but that, I think that was important for me to say tonight, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. James. Ms. Morris? Okay. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of notes about common core state standards and how it relates to the Florida Department of Education. I mentioned at a work session the other day about some workshops that were coming up. I think it's important to mention that also on TV for the viewing audience. The DOE website is, is open now and they are encouraging public comment and inviting you to make... to make individual comments on that website in reference to the Common Core State Standards. And also, DOE is hosting three regional workshops, October 15th, 16th, and 17th in Tampa, Broward County, and Tallahassee. And if you're interested, you can go to the website and get that specific information. This morning, I also had the opportunity to attend the One Ocala, One America Breakfast, and it's to begin the festivities that our city of Ocala is sponsoring, and it's really a pretty neat event. And just to encourage you, if you get the opportunity to attend any of these events, that tomorrow night, Wednesday night, there will be a musical at our MTI Auditorium at 6:00 PM. On Thursday, there'll be a Children's Diversity Social at the Ed Krosky Recreation Center, beginning at 6:00 PM. Friday, there's a movie in the park, Cross Our Fingers for Good Weather, at Citizen Circle. The movie will be 42, starring Jackie Robinson. That starts at dusk or around 7:30. And then Saturday, if you're interested in getting a good kid fixed, also at Citizen Circle, between 1:00 and 8:00 in the afternoon, there'll be a cultural festival, and many of our children will be singing and dancing in that. One high five here for our Technology Department, along with our K-12 Academic Services. Yesterday, I was speaking at the Ocala Rotary Club, and a couple of parents asked me about Parent Portal. Actually, they commented about our Parent Portal, and were very complimentary of the opportunity to go on to the Parent Portal, receive comments from their child's teacher. And I continued to emphasize, don't forget that personal touch, we want you to visit with your child's teacher and your child's school, but it's very important. And parents, you can go on to any of our school sites to register for that Parent Portal. And then a final note, you've been reading in the newspaper and hearing on the news about a situation at East Marion Elementary School, in which our student body and staff there were encountering what I will call a very widespread intestinal virus. I need to share with you, also, if you've already heard this, that the Health Department was very responsive to our needs there. Local media has been very outstanding. Our own Kevin Christian has done a fine job in monitoring our media coverage of that. We sent out extra district support, as you might have heard. Kudos to our Custodial Department, our Technical Services Department, and our Food Service Department for doing extra things to keep that school running. The East Marion community, a thank you to the parents and students there for keeping your children at home if they're not feeling well, and waiting at least 24 hours after they start feeling better before they return to school. Again, I've already mentioned the Marion County Health Department did a fabulous job working with us out there. And then finally, to the East Marion Elementary School staff, teachers, support personnel, administrative personnel did a great job. I believe the school is on the mend. We hope to get past this virus, and we think we will later on this week. That's all I have, sir.
Before I address the expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through September 20th, 2013. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 14-03 and JD 14-04 with educational services through the 2013-2014 school year? I need a motion, a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Ely. Is there any discussion on this matter?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes 5 to 0. And it does. I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 14-02 without educational services through the 2013-2014 school year. And the motion, a second, please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Mr. James. Any discussion on this matter? Did you?
May I speak?
Oh, sure, yeah.
This student was at Sermi, so he's been expelled, so he will not have any access to any school education from here on.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I believe that was 5-0, but I'll have to, yes, it was, sorry. Does any board member know of any business that needs to come in front of the board? If not, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion does pass 5-0. Madam Secretary, what time is it?
7:13.
The board, as soon as we get the... All right. Ms. Ely, Ms. Stacy, I need you to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, then we stand adjourned at 7:13.